Yes.
Okay, so if you click on the bottom right, it says laws, rules, and resources.
Okay.
Click on that.
Alrighty.
And it's a different page, right?
Correct.
So, in the first column, if you go all the way to the bottom where it says election and HAVA complaints.
Okay.
It sounds like you're gonna wanna file, um, an election complaint, I suppose, the HAVA complaint.
What's the difference between the two?
Um, just different violations of laws. It doesn't, from what you've described to me, and I don't, you haven't really described why you're filing the complaint against June.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, it's diff- like, you would file it depending on whether or not you believe she's violating HAVA, which is the Health America Vote Act, which is a federal statute.
Mm-hmm.
Or, um, Title I, which would just be an election complaint, and that's governed by state law.
Okay.
So...
'Cause what she's done is she has not given me the proper information, uh, that I need to, um, be put on the ballot.
Okay.
Yes, uh, we were, sometimes they come in and out.
Okay, on November twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen, at three forty-five P.M., Jeff Mayer and Dennis Spencer represented a group of citizens to establish a limited zone in Archuleta County. He sent in eleven petitions regarding the following issues, and that's what these are. These are petitions. Uh, one, help the patient protection and affordable care act of two thousand ten. Two, right to concealed carry. Three, preservation of gun rights. Four, reinstatement of grand jury. Five, county judges and magistrates shall be elected by the people. Six, oath of office accountability. Seven, fully informed jury. Eight, common law courts. Nine, preservation of babies' corpus and libel, uh, civil liberties. Ten, inter-party. Eleven, Archuleta County credit humans. Because of the fact that the county has no process for petitioning on, only the board can refer a ballot to a county, uh, ballot, um, I could not proceed with these in order to go on. I needed dates and everything, so having started, if they would've come to you first and, um, and asked permission to, um, circulate petitions, we would've approved the petitions. They could've taken them out and circulated them, and then, but at that time that they came in here, the dates would've started. So when I started the other day and I accepted these, I couldn't put them in the system because we had no dates. We had no beginning date, we had no ending date, we had no circulation end date, because we had no beginning date. So I'm presenting these to you today to, um, for further consideration.
Okay, I have a question, and then because the process wasn't followed correctly, I have to turn to you, County Attorney Spencer, and ask, uh, some direction there, if the process was not followed correctly.
Well, it's not that the process wasn't followed correctly, it's that there absolutely is no, no process. A county, uh, is a political subdivision of the state. It's not an independent government or entity existing by reason of any inherent sovereign power or authority of its residents. Accordingly, Archuleta County possesses only those powers that are expressly conferred, conferred by the Constitution and by the Colorado revised statutes, and any such incidental, incidental or implied powers that are reasonably necessary to carry out, um, those specific powers. I recognize, and I know the board recognizes, that the power of initiative is a fundamental right at the very core of our republic's form of government. However, in, in, uh, the Colorado Court of Appeals, in a case, uh, called Dellinger versus the Board of County Commissioners from the county of Teller County, and also in County Road Users Association versus the Board of County Commissioners, uh, the court stated that the power of initiative and referendum are not generally referred to the electors of, of county governments. And as noted, and I'll quote now from the case, from the Teller County case, "As noted, the rights of initiative and referendum are not generally reserved to the electors as to county governments." Colorado Constitution, Article Five, Section One, Subsection, Subparagraph Ones, Two, and Three, grant legislative power to the General Assembly with reservation to the people of the powers of initiative and referendum. These reserved powers are further reserved to the registered electorate of every city, town, and municipality as to all local, special, and municipal legislation. The Colorado Constitution, at Article Five, Section One, Subparagraph Nine, they are not, however, expressly reserved to the electors of counties as such. By statute, counties have been granted rights of initiative on a countywide basis in certain limited contexts. For example, a countywide sales tax on initiative is allowed. Or charter, if we were to become a home rule county, a charter initiative on referendum measure would be allowed. But there is no, uh, there is no statute that specifically authorizes initiatives at the county level such that the proposals here, uh, would be authorized. Consequently, you have no authority to put these on the ballot.
I mean, I wanna take your advice, but I have a couple other commissioners up here that they would like to make a comment on the ballot, too, but I, I am gonna take your advice. So, okay, do you have any comments?
Uh, just one question, also, I don't preserve as much time as possible for public comment. If Archuleta County were to become a home rule county, would then, would we then fall into the municipal portion of what you just said?
I have not looked, I don't think you would, but I believe the county charter could provide for initiative and referendum. And, and so if you were to be a home rule county and, and the charter provided for it, then there would be a process for it.
Although if the charter does not provide for it, there would not be a process. Not very important that that would be in there, if that would be an issue in if it were to become home rule, which is a business.
And June, forgive me, if I can just ask a general question. Just, what is an election cost? What's it cost for an election?
It depends on the election. It depends on whether we're doing a primary and you have how many ballots. So it's all based on the size of your ballot, how many ballots, and the programming of those ballots. Last year, just to hold an election, the county costs were like seventy-five thousand. What we could bill out for just the ballots and the programming was about five hundred.
So for this question, you know, his, his...
This one would be different, because he asked me if I could give him the price, and I can't. Because the size of these questions, you have to know the size of your ballot before you can go to a programmer and say, "Oh, that's gonna cost me five hundred dollars more." We don't know that. We would have to go back to the bid for, to the programmers to see what a size, a ballot got sized, and even how big it would be. You'd have to lay it out to see what size, if we're talking eight and a half by Paul, if we're talking eight and a half by eighteen, two sides, three sides, then your costs go up. But until we would have that, there's no way to tell you what that portion of the election costs.
But, but you're saying it's anywhere from forty-five...
To thirty-five.
Thousand dollars, I agree. And that would be borne by the taxpayers and the government.
Yeah.
And it's certainly not a budgeted item for the year.
No, and you, as a, as a county, cannot call a special election anyway. You cannot have an election this year, because Christmas is coming. Because there's not enough time, nor can you call a special election except for sales tax.
I think he was asking about...
Fourteen, two thousand fourteen?
Yeah.
You have to put it on the ballot. You have to put it on the reservation.
So on this, you know, I mean, my pleasure is to follow our attorney's advice and absolutely anything, because I think that is the right thing to do. You know, obviously, we have the other council, we pay him salary, and we pay him the goodest good advice, and I feel that he becomes a good cop person. So with that, you know, that's my opinion, that's, that's what I'd like to do. You guys okay with that?
Can you hear from the public?
Thank you.
Yeah, well, definitely, I'm a public speaker, but I'm just asking you, Ben, where you guys at?
Well, I, I, I mean, I, I'm in a tough position, because there are certainly things in here that I, that I agree with, you know, that I'd like to see a lot of. Why, some things I disagree with. I would study them a lot, and it's really not my job to form an opinion to decide, you know, what the electorate should get to go on or not get to go on. The flip side of it is, we can't, we can't have a situation where, I think, a group of well-meaning citizens come in with a group of signatures that, that there's no start and stop date, there's, there's no procedure to be followed, and then we bill the taxpayers and the county to, to pay for an election. So, I mean, I'm, I'm with my, I'd like your public comment, but that's what I'm at.
So, and then, I, I actually would like to hear your comments on it. June, thank you for answering that question, I do appreciate it. Okay, Michael wants to make a quick comment, I don't know that it can get started.
Actually, it's a, it's a question, and I've had a chance to review these, I met with some of the proponents back a while back now. Um, and, and there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of good in this. My question is, what I heard is that we do not have the authority or a process to carry this forward. We don't do not.
The Board of County Commissioners, there is not a process for the public and the county government to bring a ballot into the public.
So...
That is the initiative, initiative and referendum process that other, other governments enjoy, which we do not.
Can, can we establish such a process?
No.
We cannot.
If we were a home rule, we could probably establish that in the charter, but, you know, because the Constitution and the statutes do not give us that authority, but for, in the case of sales tax, and I think there was a case of home rule, and I think there's a, um, that we have that process.
I thought they had researched all that.
I need to hear from you. Now, we're gonna go ahead and ask for public comment, and it's important.
Thank you, Dennis.
And some of you, we know most of you, Dennis, we know you, and we know how to spell your last name, but some of you folks out there, June, may not know how to spell your last name. Nothing on her case, which sometimes she doesn't know how to spell her last name, so, uh, these are difficult to spell. So if you will, some of you, we're gonna ask you to spell your last name, please don't take it as disrespect, but we wanna get it right, so, okay? And only three minutes, everybody only gets three minutes, that's all we get, so just so you know that, okay? Go ahead and start with your first one, go ahead.
Dennis Spencer, sixty... No, it does not.
Well, get it.
Green light on now, yeah.
There you go, Dennis.
The, uh, first of all, the Dennis Spencer, six by four easy street. You need anything else?
No, you're good. Your address, you said it, so you're good.
Okay, I formally request more than three minutes, because I had several people there who were willing to yield their time every time we come here, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be a long process just to do that.
I'll allow you, uh, six minutes, okay?
That's good.
I can do a twenty-four. They're good at that, though, from what I've seen.
I gave you just one.
Oh, okay.
Okay, first of all, I wanna, I wanna say real quick what got me involved. We all, we're all familiar, I don't want to go through the list, there's a whole, uh, long train of abuses that, uh, that mostly the federal government, the state government recently did, that we need to counteract, and we can do that through the ballot initiative process. And, uh, in Colorado, in the county, and I'm gonna show you that, we're totally against what he says, and I'm gonna show you this in the start point. The, uh, so the first principle is, where do the rights come from? Do they come from men? No, they don't. They come from the Constitution, absolutely not. They come from the next one, under the Declaration of Independence, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and they are now by their creator, with certain inalienable rights. Okay, so it doesn't come from the Constitution, it does not come from men. This is a God-given right, where men cannot take that away from us, all right? I get kinda emotional about stuff like that. All right, uh, so what, what is the idea of what the people can do to secure these rights peacefully? All right? And this is going to Declaration of Independence, that to secure these rights, govern them or institute among men, that deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed, all right? And, um, and if not, then we fall, I'm gonna, we'll go down to where, where we fall under absolute deputism, which is absolute rule from government, instead of the people. We don't, we don't have that, we have a republic. We don't have a democracy, we have a republic. Go on to the next one, this is codified in our Bill of Rights in Colorado. In, uh, in Article Two of the Bill of Rights, the Colorado Constitution, Article Two, Section One, says, "All political power is vested in and derived from the people. All government or right originates from the people, and is founded upon their will only, and is instituted only for the good of the whole." So, I wanna go back to that word, "all," "all," all, all, right? Second one, Bill of Rights, Article Two of the Bill of Rights of Colorado. People of this state have the sole and exclusive right of governing themselves as a free, sovereign, and independent state, and to alter or abolish the, their constitution for government whenever they may deem it necessary for their safety and happiness, provide such change to be not referred to the Constitution of the United States. So what happens if a state law contradicts the Constitution of the United States? There's the supremacy clause here. Article Six, Section Two, that the Constitution of the United States says, "The Constitution of the laws of the United States shall be made in pursuance thereof, and all treaties made shall be made under the authority of the United States shall be the supreme law of the land." So anything that goes against the supreme law of the land is no avoided from the very beginning. There's a court case, wait a minute. So, uh, any law court decision that goes against the law is no avoided, and the one I'm talking about is the first Bill of Right that we have. Congress shall make no law respecting the status of religion or freedom, exercise thereof, or reaching, uh, reaching the freedom of speech, or the press, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government. That's what I wanted to highlight in the red, and you're, I'm good. You have a right to petition the government. It does not come from government, it comes from God. And to reaffirm this, the Supreme Court ruled in eighteen oh-three, Maughey versus Madison. It, any law that is repugnant to the Constitution is no and void of law. All right? Now, we actually found it in the statutory law that, that, uh, that the county does have petition and referred measures, and it's, uh, it's bound in thirty-eleven-one-oh-three-point-five, and I just wanna read the highlighted part of it, that, that it says that, it's 'cause it's not clearly read, wrote out, you guys got this in an email, it says, uh, that you need to follow as nearly practical procedures of the municipal initiatives and referred measures as part of one of Article eleven of Title Thirty-One, so that begs the question, what are the municipal procedures? And that's on the next page. And, uh, it goes through a list of exactly what we had, which we followed to the T, including the hundred and eighty days, the, uh, the four, the public format that June approved, that June legit approved of way back in May thirtieth, and we turned it at the last page, it says to me, five percent of the, of the, the electorate, we got twelve, fourteen percent. So we did a way beyond that five percent. Now, the, the answer to the question as to whether it needs to go to you first is answered on the next page. The initiative provisions, this is, this is case law, the initiative provisions are expressly declared to be self-executing, and as such, only legislation which will further the purpose of the constitutional provision to facilitate its operation, and then in nine, in three years later, nineteen seventy-five, they, they said it again, 'cause I guess somebody had a question about it, the things that, "It shall be, in all respects, self-executing merely means that the power of the initiative referendum rests with the people, whether or not the General Assembly implements the power." All right? Following that? See, the next one is, uh, I don't have much time, go for it. Okay, yeah, I actually, I thought I was gonna have Jeff Mayer, uh, because there's not a county, uh, resolution or ordinance that allows that to happen, that's cool. Uh, I'm not, that's what I've done. Jeff Mayer, we actually wrote, uh, a, a resolution for you that you could follow. So Jeff?
Okay, and it's important to note, he took a couple of people's turns, so if, if Jeff, or, I mean, Mr. Spencer already said something, please don't repeat it, you know, 'cause, you know, we wanna continue with this, and we wanna give everybody time, but we don't wanna hear the same thing over and over and over.
That's fine. Jeff Mayer, M.A.E.H.R., nine point four East Old Pine Road. Um, do I need to repeat what I said earlier? As far as the...
No, we're good, go ahead.
Okay.
I know you can take all the time you need.
We have these, I can pass these out to you, and as I was saying, um, we do have the right, the counties do have a right to do this sort of thing, because El Paso County has done it. Um, and Peggy Littleton, one of the commissioners, is going to give me, um, a, a copy of what they had. She was really excited, she's watching what we're doing, Monizuma County's watching what we're doing, Weld County's watching what we're doing, uh, La Plata County's watching what we're doing, and the groups that are in it, because they know this is, uh, we're basically, uh, setting a precedent here, or, you know, setting history, so, uh, I mean, we had that, like, like, uh, we got over six thousand one hundred and five signatures on these things, we could've doubled that had we been the manpower or the time to do it. Um, it's a very popular thing, I think most people in here are all for liberty, am I right? Our constitutional rights, and we're, we're talking to a lot of groups, including Rand Paul, and we've been, uh, in communication with their office, and we've sent them information on the concept of the Liberty Zone, and is this a coincidence or not, that now he's talking about a side thing called economic freedom zones, that he's starting to push and wants to get out there? So is that a coincidence? I don't think so, we don't think so. We just feel that, uh, there's, there are pressures in, in the governments, the way they are now, to subvert our constitutional rights, and we have more case law than what was there. We have probably another dozen Colorado case laws that talk very clearly about referents and, and our ballot initiatives, and that it's the people's right to do it, and, and to exercise it, and we can't here, um, set up our own, and this is just a film there, you can do something to maybe mix this with what Peggy and, and their county has done, but, um, we have to do something. We have to be proactive here, and we can't beat around the bush. We have to be strong, and we have to go forward, and not, um, like I said, we just feel like our, our rights and our constitutional authorities and liberties, et cetera, et cetera, is being subverted by the entrenched, you know, misplaced, misunderstood concepts that government is the boss, and we, the peons, are here to serve you, you're here to serve us, and that starts... And we wanna just get that back. We're your friends, we're here to support you guys, but we've hired you, and we want you to do what we want you to do, and, and it's happening across the country, and I think Archuleta County can be a spearhead that the whole rest of county, or the whole rest of the state and the rest of the country, well, we've actually looked to, because it's something that we can do, and people can do at the local level, because people are frustrated out of their skulls, because they don't know what to do.
Three minutes, June, three minutes, exactly, good job with that. Okay, is there any other public comment?
Yes.
And again, I need your names and your addresses, please, in a minute, three minutes. And if something's already been said, please don't say it yet.
My name is, can you hear me?
No.
My name? My name?
The green light's gotta come on, by the way.
My name is Patricia Ryz, R-Y-Z. I live at sixty-seven Highland Avenue, and I'm here to address the concerns that the commissioners expressed about the taxpayers and the money that it would take to put these initiatives on the ballot. And I wanted to address that for you. Two years ago, there was an audited financial for the camper accounts that were reported to the federal government as required by law, and that showed an eight million dollar surplus of unrestricted funds, and this year, this last audited financial shows a nine million dollars unrestricted funds, which means they're available, and what better, what better way to spend them than this way? Also, all those six thousand something signatures are taxpayers', and they knew, because we cost money to do it, um, and so maybe include in the referendum a section saying, "Yes, we are willing to pay for this with our tax." Um, you know, don't worry about the taxpayers, they want their freedoms. By the way, by the way, I'm old, and I can't hear, so I would appreciate it if everybody would speak up.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, appreciate that. Okay, is there any other public comment? I need you to state your name.
My name is Christine Jones, and I live at two-six-one Driftwood Drive, in Drex. And I wanna thank the county commissioners for hearing me today, who helped out me, but I see you guys a lot. Anyway, um, I wanna start off, but I wanted to say, early Pagosa County settlers, before I share my thoughts on the petition. Most of these came out of the first fifty years by John N. Potter, which is an excellent read. I've lived in Archuleta County since ninety-nine. I love our county, and was happy to have found that early settlers had much belief in the society's capability to prosper. It reads, "Fired with unvast optimism, pioneers began permanent settlement in Pagosa County in eighteen seventy-six, at Pagosa Springs, in eighteen seventy-eight. They carried with them a variety of skills and hopes. The greatest of the hopes was that Pagosa Springs would become an important economic center of the San Juan, but speculation was logical at the time." Chapter John N. McCombs, he was the captain here, says, "It can scarcely be doubted that in future years it will become a celebrated place of resort, both for those who reside in the surrounding country, and quote, 'wonder hunting, hope-seeking travelers from foreign lands.'" And so if the settlers in Pagosa County believed a large resort would develop attracting people from across the world, this would bring prosperity to the residents of Pagosa County. I said this because I, like early settlers, wanna see prosperity in Archuleta County. By passing these petitions, we can be sovereignly governed, and El Paso County has done this, what we're doing. The people who live in this county can decide what's best for it instead of big government out of Denver. My hope is that when the American economy is tough, Pagosa could be a safe harbor, not a place to move away from the fine work in other multipurpose towns. By passing these petitions, hopefully our county commissioners can work on decreasing overregulated state and federal law, and allow for better businesses that offer more job opportunities, therefore creating a better quality of life for full-time residents. The then petition alone may be able to attract Ben, or ammo manufacturers, that can provide numerous jobs year-round. Also, the nullification of Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act of two thousand twelve, twelve, otherwise known as Obamacare, could bring men, doctor specialists to come here, because Obamacare severely limits the amount of money doctors can get paid. The passing of these petitions would be a historic landmark. We could be the freest place in America, and, um, and we'd be the freest county in America, and gain immense support and popularity. I am so grateful to all the time and hard work people have put into having these petitions signed. I know that once passed, the work will continue, but with continued good government to work for the people of our county, we will, as the early settlers, see a bright future in Archuleta. Thank you.
Public comment, please, I just need you to state your name and your address, please, and...
My name is Wayne Wright, I live at two-thirty-five Rimview Court here.
Wayne Wright.
There's an investment right there, you need. Anyhow, uh... Wayne, Wayne Wright, Wayne Wright, the O-L-A-N-T. Thank you for listening to us.
I still need your address, I'm sorry.
Two-thirty-five Rimview Court.
Rimview.
As a past elected official in Southern Arizona, the highest honor I had, U3, was the oath of office, and I took that seriously. And one of the things that I did as an elected official before I retired and finally came to this beautiful country, was the fact that with that oath of office, I had to take the initiative on myself, and it caused me a lot of heartache, a heart attack, and everything else, because what most elected officials do is they rely on staff and bureaucrats. Wrong. It is your responsibility, when you take that oath of office, to understand that we, the electorate, determine what you design, and that's through a popular vote, not through an attorney, not through a staff, but you have to do it, and that is your responsibility. If you do not do that, you can become under... If you do not do that, you can become under citizen's arrest, and you can be apprehended into pain. That is our right, gentlemen. I'm not threatening that, but that is our right as citizens, and we take our Constitution seriously...